I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to remind everybody, we are being filmed. Mr. McNamara?
Here.
Ms. Powers?
Here.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Here.
Mr. Beach?
Here with cookies.
Here with cookies. I am also here with cookies. Mr. Monroe is absent prior notice.
No cookies for him.
I'll take his cookies.
No cookies for him. We have with us, we have Alyssa, we have Mrs. Tavares, Dr. Baldwin. Dr. Baldwin, want to tell us who's with us?
President of the FBA.
Mrs. Klein, hello. All right. Moving on, we have minutes in our packets. Start with our November 16th, 2016 regular session minutes. Have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? And then we have the minutes for our November 3rd, 2016 emergency meeting. Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Abstained.
All in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention. I guess that's still the way things still go. We have no people to write. I don't think we have anyone here for public comments, so we'll move right into student advisory.
Our Fairhaven High School Blue Devil cheerleaders were successful yet again with another state championship title in November.
That's awesome.
Yep, they are. They have a streak, quite a streak. The Fairhaven High School STAND Group, which is Students and Teachers Against Needless Discrimination, took wonderful initiative in recognizing the work of the Fairhaven Police Department in November. The students and faculty signed a banner of appreciation which the STAND Group presented to Officer Joseph.
Oh, nice.
Really sweet. And today, many students had the great opportunity to, for real-life classroom application. They went on a field trip to Body Worlds in Providence, which, yeah, if you're not familiar with it, it's an exposition of real preserved human bodies and body parts. So, yeah. Interesting.
For all the science, for all those science-interested, great.
The rest of us are skeeter.
All right. Anyone have any questions or comments for Alyssa?
Nope.
All right. Thanks. So we'll move right into reports and recommendations of the superintendent received November 1st monthly enrollment. Dr. Baldwin?
Sure. Madam Chair, this is, as we do on a monthly basis, my only comment regarding our monthly enrollment is I have read, never been asked, but have read misinformation that's out there regarding whatever's going on with the future of the Rogers School, in which we are overcrowded in elementary schools. That is absolute misinformation. The town administrators reached out to me. I will be providing for him information regarding our class size goals and the distribution of students in classes at the elementary level. Nothing could be further from the truth. We are, you've seen the distribution at three classes per grades in East Fairhaven School and four classes per grades in the Wood School. And if anything, this year, the equitable distribution is, of course, a little bit slightly above our class size goals. But again, those class size goals are very aggressive, and so I will be providing that information to the town administrator as a breakdown that you had received earlier when we talked about that, when you had asked the questions. And right before we present the budget, which is the tradition, we always give a class size goals analysis. And you will also be able to see that there, we are not only fairly close to our aggressive class size goals, but the distribution is very equitable. So, the information that you may have read or heard about individuals stating that we're overcrowded at the schools and looking for more space is absolutely inaccurate and is misinformation. And I will address that with the town administrator to help him out in future meetings.
Great. Any questions or comments?
No.
Yes?
I noticed there's a, there's a little bit of a bump at East Fairhaven. Is it, is it just a lot of people moving into town, or do you have any idea? I mean, it is probably the most capacity difference part of town.
I have no idea. It's just people are transient throughout the year. I don't have a specific beat on why that was that time. As we know, we could very well come to our next meeting. The most movement is between now and the next time we meet in January, in that there is a lot of movement sometimes from the holidays. So, we could either see a downtick and an adjustment, or we could see a change in that. But I don't have a specific.
Any other questions? All right. Receive information regarding districts by your capital plan.
Madam Chair, this was distributed on time to the town administrator electronically. This is the cover page of the electronic submission. You will see somewhere in here, I'm hoping, that there might be a little piece where it shows there was an attachment. And if there is, I can explain what, but there were multiple attachments. So, for example, when we submitted the $7.3 million high school project, the attachment was provided that you received
Right.
in the meeting. So they received the 50-page colored book that we received from Lynn Spencer. The other area, so that's the 7.3, that's priority two. Priority one is the beginning of a combination of community foundation funding. And what was also described by Lynn Spencer is the operation of the windows. I'm going to kind of go back and forth between this agenda item and the next one. This past, a week ago Wednesday, I presented at the community preservation meeting, which was at Town Hall. And that was for $75,000 for that fund to fund the operations of the windows that Lynn had highlighted in her last meeting. The capital planning group would then pick up $151,000 of that, and then the trust fund would take on the architectural fees. So you can see in number one, that's how that funding is broken down. So, number one is next year, a combination of community preservation, capital planning, funding, and trust funding. And the question that was brought forward, and the reason that Lynn Spencer showed up with me, is there was a question that the highlighted windows were the exact same windows and project that were done three years prior. And right in the cover of the description, it says, "While the exterior windows were painted this summer, the problems with their operation remain." So, that 2014 submission, and what's just happened this past summer, was the painting of the windows. And I guess they didn't look deeper in to see, this isn't about the painting of those windows. This is about the, going back to the original system that Lynn had described, about the pulleys and the weights and the cords, et cetera. So, we would get a head start with this project next year. And then, the capital planning group has the full $7.3 million project to continue that. And it was chunked up into a four-year period of time. And the last of which, if it's just roofing, is something that is eligible for MSBA reimbursement. So, those two are kind of linked, the first two priorities. And Lynn Spencer, in great detail, explained that to us. So, the community preservation is nothing more than a way to pay the entire operational part of the windows that were recommended at the last meeting. And that's very consistent with what we've done in the past. So, that was presented, community preservation. Number two is the entire document and background material that was presented to the school committee at our last meeting and submitted. Number three is connectivity. And I truly believe, and most communities are starting to do this, that the fourth utility is the internet and connectivity and broadband. And this is not just a proposal for the Fairhaven Public Schools. What we submitted was a 10-page attached proposal from Comcast to the capital planning committee, in which this would be an annual payment to Comcast for full connectivity to all town buildings. This is the high figure. It allows the discussion to begin with the town to say, can we qualify for E-rate reimbursement? If it's both the school and the library, can that be cut back? Will the town partner up with us with IT, which is really the smart thing to do? And talk about working together. I know they were looking a year ago for an IT director. Why both entities each need their separate IT director, really doesn't make much sense to me. Can those monies be utilized to have even bigger and better programming? What we're getting at in that is that it's not about buying new computers for people. It's about having them trained, having connectivity, having the security, having them taught on the different skills. And ultimately, you know, you're looking at even business departments that are separate in their, but they do the same thing. We pay our employees in our town. So, in the long run, are we using the same software packages? So it's really a start. This allows us to begin the discussion with connectivity, but then to go deeper into looking at IT services. And when we're talking about the town, we're talking about our neighbors. We're talking about the police and fire, who are right across the street. Town Hall, the library is a separate entity, and the BPW is a separate entity. So, you're really looking at the rec center, police and fire, and Town Hall when you're looking at combining services. So, that is just the connectivity portion. I'm not saying this is the way to go. Obviously, this would have to be bid out, but it begins the discussion with the town. And then, the fourth one is architectural engineering. And that is for our gymnasium. The gymnasium since almost the beginning has had water penetration because the humidity and the air quality is so poor in that gymnasium that the air handlers are opened up as wide as they can be opened up. They have to be, so people can survive fall athletic contests, junior days, possible graduations, any other events that take place in the months of September, October, May, and June. And in doing so, if there's any rain whatsoever, those handlers are wide open and pulling in water. And then the water is coming in, and it looks like we have a roofing and a leaking problem. The problem is we have a humidity problem. And we did go up on the roof. It was my maiden voyage up on the roof. I did it with ladders and everything else, in work shoes, and I don't mean work shoes. My work shoes, which was interesting. And looked at it with Lynn Spencer. We were up there with Manny. We were up there with some specialists from GGD, and they put together a proposal on that. So, we've submitted to the town everything that's on our radar to this point in time. The five-year capital plan. No one can say that we can make people aware that these things are out there. And, you know, I just wanted to share with you the cover pages. All the background has been submitted in the verbiage that you can see on the cover. So, that's kind of sort of those two agenda items.
Okay. What's the next step? Now that the submission's gone in for the capital planning committee, like where did things go for me?
I was unable to make the meeting Monday night, the initial meeting, but I will be in contact with the chair, who is a former school committee member here, Mr. Tillit. I will be in contact with Mark Reese and find out the next steps. Based on the violence, I think our group, which I've been a part of now for a couple of years, is pretty aggressive and has to start making recommendations. But the system that Mr. Reese put forward is weighted and very objective-based. So, a lot of times, we have our potential firms submitting for you, which we have. It gives you a lot of extra points. I mean, some people are just saying, I need this. Well, where's the backup to this? We had backup with each and every proposal that we submitted. Backup by professionals, not just somebody's opinion. So, I will inform the committee as soon as we know further where they're heading with this. Obviously, $7.3 million is something that, but at least people are now aware. And we talked about meeting further. This will, this will be presented to the board of selectmen at some point in time. They'll be aware of this at some point in time, and then it's a go to talk about how we deal with it.
All right. Any questions or comments?
It's probably not even relevant this year or next year, but I know the MSBA's had a program in place a long time for roofs and windows and boilers and special stuff, but do you think they're going to blink when they see our roof?
Probably. But a roof is a roof, and if they have a roof program and we need a roof that needs to be made whole, I would say probably, but they blinked before and they came through. I think what we have is something that's unique. I think they need to come see it. I think they need to see, you know, what it's all about. And then, you know, we're replacing a roof, and we need to replace it the way it is. So yes, they probably will begin to blink, and our job is to keep their eyes wide open.
Sell, sell, sell.
Yes.
Anyone else? Other questions or comments? All right. So we will move into the next. We actually have several administrative regulations that we need to tackle and, which are job descriptions. And so, Dr. Baldwin, I'm just going to place that whole chunk of stuff in your lap.
Sure. It makes sense to do it that way. So the first chunk deals with negotiations with the secretarial union. We have not had formal job descriptions that describe the three different classifications, principal clerk, senior clerk, junior clerk. We've asked it to be from the ground up, to tell us what exactly you do. Some of it is really, really from the ground up, you know, answering phones and copying, et cetera. But we want everyone to know what the roles and responsibilities are. They ramp up as someone goes from being, everyone should know everything. Everyone should be able to do everything. But primarily, a senior and a principal clerk have a little bit higher protocol. Principal clerk being the one who would do purchase orders and money, attached closely to the principal of the building. The senior clerk, a lot of times, would be dealing with the assistant principal and have to deal with the inputting of data, discipline data, inputting into X2, et cetera. But they all should be interchangeable and be able to do and know everything, which also allows us, if somebody doesn't, to provide them with training. So, it just formalizes this, puts it into the three tiers, three classifications. It has been reviewed by the secretarial union. It has been agreed to as part of negotiations, not that, but that we would do this, and also that we would have a subsequent evaluation part of that also. So, it's just kind of formalizing all of the roles and responsibilities and job duties. And if someone is looking to be promoted from a classification of junior to senior to principal, it's about having the skills to be able to do that, not just the time put in the district.
All right. Does anyone have any questions related to the three clerk positions?
Yep.
All right. We need to vote to receive a place on file administrative regulation, GCAR junior clerk, GCA dash R senior clerk, and GCA dash R principal clerk.
It's moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. So the next one on the list is receive a place on file administrative reg, GCAR FHS principal and FHS associate principal.
So, these two, and then the other two with them are, as we talked about at our last meeting, the formalizing of the interim assistant superintendent, the interim director of instructional technology and finance. And in doing so, these are all building leadership positions that allows us to be able to have someone be an interim assistant superintendent, lead building principal, but then have someone have a lot of the co-assignments that we talked about in having the associate principal tag and right along the line. And in doing so, we cleaned up the principal and superintendent. Cleaned up the principal one based on Etavau.
Right.
Why wouldn't, if you're evaluated on that, why wouldn't your job description be that? So, and then the associate principal says co, as simply as that. And then, I believe if we dug up a superintendent's job description, it might be from 1954. Things have changed since 1954.
Yeah.
And so we went ahead and did the same exact thing. We took the indicators and the elements from Etavau and basically made that the job description, with a few other pieces that we add from the superintendent's checklist from the state level. And then, the assistant superintendent, again, is works with the superintendent, in the absence of the superintendent. So, both are in line with Etavau. Both are updating. One is updating for about a number of 60 years. And then, the assistant and the associate are in concert with the leadership position. So, sets of job descriptions from the secretarial union and sets of job descriptions from building leadership and district leadership.
Are there any questions related to the last set of job descriptions that Dr. Baldwin just described? All right. Let's start with the high school job description. So, can I have a motion to receive a place on file administrative, administration regulation, GCA dash R FHS principal and GCA dash R FHS associate principal?
Motion, please, on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then, a motion to receive a place on file administrative reg, GCA dash R superintendent and GCA dash R assistant superintendent.
It's moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Discuss upcoming events. Our next meeting is January 11th, 2017.
Wow.
Hard to believe. Is there anything else that we should be aware of, Dr. Baldwin?
No. I will tell you that based on the schedule for budget submission, you will have a draft preliminary budget on January 11th, 2017. And we're working really hard right now in a different manner than we've done in the past. We've had each and every building principal in to present their proposed budget. That, those two sets of meetings have taken two full days of having different groups come in to present what their proposed budget is. And now it's time for us to put it all together and get ready for presentation, get ready for submission to the town. I will do what you've asked me to do, give a full menu. And that's, that's what we will do, and I'll give justification beyond that. The other thing on the horizon is we have paperwork due around that same time to the state regarding the audit that won't be coming in until February. So, the two main focuses in our office right now are budget and audit, and going to elementary and middle school concerts.
Yes.
And then, my favorite is the last day at the high school, which is a half a day, as a reminder to everyone in going that morning and listening to our high school kids perform. If you're not ready for the holidays after that, you'll never be. So, tis the season.
Yeah.
And budget season.
Yes.
And the holiday season. And for us this year, it's an audit season. And then, we'll be back in 2017.
Right. What is the date for the budget submission to the town? Do you have a date?
So the date for the budget submission to the town is January 6th. It's a Friday. What I will do is, the town administrator knows full well that you are my superiors and that I will always submit to you first. But that also coincides with usually the day that we set the agenda and put out a figure. So, I would probably contact you and say, if we're ready on that date, I would give him a heads up and a call. He wouldn't put it out public.
Right.
But we meet the submission deadline, number one, with the town, and so no one could ever say we didn't do that. And then at the same time, you would at least have the draft figure in hand. And again, the relationship in working with the town administrator is a wonderful one. It's nothing more than a phone call explaining the situation, and how would he best recommend we proceed. It is not adversarial whatsoever. It is very cooperative. And so it'll be a simple phone call from me to his office saying, how do you want us to best do this? We plan on presenting it to our committee on that Wednesday. Do you want the number as a heads up, or do you want us to wait? And I will, I will abide by the answer.
All right. All right. We do have one piece of new business. Vote to approve FHS freshman basketball coach stipend.
This is a good problem to have. We have, for whatever reason, in the contract, and it shouldn't be that way, we have assistants, so that we have boys varsity, junior varsity, and a third tier. And for whatever reason, we do not have the same on the girls' side. We should have the same on the girls' side. It is a bigger issue than a contract negotiation. It is Title IX inequity and all the right things.
Absolutely.
So the good news is, it should be there, number one. The other good news is, there are so many girls trying out, that there's a reason for it to be there. If, if you have pieces in a contract and are funding ready, excuse me, and you don't have enough people to fill it, then you don't fund it.
Right.
But you can't have the opposite. And the opposite here is, you have people and it not there. It should be there. It's wrong that it's not there. So, I do need your formal approval this evening to add that. I don't believe that the FBA president is going to have a problem with adding something. So, and I appreciate that. But it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
So, with your blessing and your formal vote, we have enough girls to be on the team. We've recently just done this too in a very cooperative way. Most recently, we've had discussions about drama at the middle school level, and we've kind of righted that ship a little bit. There's a principal's choice, but then there's also two areas in which he's not filling. Drama's been amazingly well-received at the middle school. So let's feed where the kids are, and let's pay the people to advise them for that, as opposed to it being, it just needs to be done upfront, upright, and forward, and that's how we're doing with this.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments for Dr. Baldwin related to this, this position? All right. So can we have a motion to approve the FHS freshman basketball coach stipend?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right. Great. Glad you could correct that issue.
Yes.
I'm glad to hear there's so many young ladies interested in playing. That's terrific. All right. Questions, comments from individual committee members? Does anybody have anything this evening? Go ahead.
Yes. You brought up the performances, the music department. I totally forgot about that.
Go right ahead.
Yeah. Next Wednesday, the public concert and for the senior citizens will be on Wednesday during the day. And then the formal concert is on Thursday, I think, at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. All right. Very good. Thank you. Yes, I did anything to ask you that, actually. Anyone else have anything? Yeah, go ahead.
Middle school concerts next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yes. The 7th and 8th grade is next Tuesday at 6:30.
I actually got some fantastic feedback Saturday when I was walking around down the center of town about the open house that was here for the underclassmen, trying to convince them that this is the place to be. It sounds like it was a very convincing display. Really positive from families, and really positive, I ran into some of the staff at the Town Hall, and they felt really good about what, what the turnout was and all of that. So, it sounds like it was a success all around, and I think they did something a little bit differently this year, and they invited the 7th graders to come as well, so that they could start to get a taste of what we had to offer. And just heard from a lot of different people with kids entering who hadn't had experience here before that they were just amazed by what, what opportunities they would have for their kids. So I was, was pretty proud to be able to hear that and to just see the enthusiasm in people as they were thinking about their kids coming here. Go ahead, Mrs. Powers.
Yeah. I attended. And it was, my, my 8th grader and his friends were thrilled and so excited about, about coming here. They are, they're, they were excited about the options. I kept hearing options from the other parents in Facebook posts afterwards, and they were just like, can't believe the options they have, and how beautiful the building is, and how lucky their kids are to be here. I mean, we walked into room 7, you know, and that's just, when somebody hasn't been here before, it, it was, it gave you goosebumps because they were so like, this is, this is where they go to school. These kids take classes in here, and they, they come in here, and, and they were, they were actually looking in the desks for graffiti and, "Mrs. Yack could have found it. It's not there." And, yeah, so it was, it was, it was, it was quite amazing, and they can't wait to get started. I asked my son, "What are you most excited about?" And he said, I said, "But, you know, what was the thing you really want to do?" He goes, he said, "Physics and geometry." I said, "Really?"
But we all didn't say that.
Like, physics and geometry. Okay. We're good. So, but that's how exciting they needed sound, you know? Education was.
Yes.
The freshman class is putting on a game night here, 5 to 8 on Friday, I think. Board games, other games, pizza, hanging out. So it's a fundraiser for the class of it, so. Case closed.
Anything else, folks? Anybody else? Alright. Oh, one other thing I did hear, sorry. I talked to a lot of people on Saturday. That the middle school had an awesome dance on Friday night as well. Like 200, over 200 students attended, which is like the biggest one they've ever had. And staff members were DJing, and it sounded like it was really a great turnout. And so, so it's great to hear that there's a lot of exciting things happening at the middle school. Yeah, a lot of enthusiasm. The kids are, kids are really, you know, taking advantage of some of the opportunities. So I know that sometimes at middle school, that dances are not as easy to get them to go to. So, so it's great to hear that they had such a nice evening. So that was the, oh, that was the other piece of feedback I heard, so. Alright. And I think we do not have anything for executive session tonight. So I believe we are...
That's a quick one.
We are done. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, following over.
There you go.
Alright, motion carries.